Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting of July 20th at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30 A S Section 20 relating to the COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the July 20th, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available at a later date at www.lakcam.tv. As preliminary matter, this is Rich LaCamera, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff, and persons anticipated on the agenda present and can hear me. Members, I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. State each member's name. Lillian Fabian?
Here.
Brian Day?
Here.
Maureen Candino, Town Administrator?
Yeah.
And Tracy Craig?
Yeah.
And I'll go to the Finance Committee when the Finance Committee calls their meeting to order. Okay. All right. Good evening, this is the open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with the Governor's, Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020 due to the COVID current situation of state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. To mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings as such. The Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. As to what you find posted with the agenda material this meeting allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonably accessible is afforded to the public according to the deliberations of this meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website. So, okay. This meeting is not being recorded by anybody else that we're aware of and that we are going to use the chat feature on Facebook. If anybody has a question, I'm going to make a comment. We'll try to answer the question as best we can. Okay. So, first thing on the agenda is the Selectmen's announcements. Lea, you're going to take care of those?
Yes, I'd love to. So, I hate to open it with sad news, but we lost in Lakeville our oldest resident, Rena Fernald, died at home on July 15th, and she was 102 years old. So, you know, our sympathies go out to her family and what a, I can't imagine how many changes Rena saw over her lifetime. So, our sympathies do go out to her family. Next on announcements, the town clerk would like to make all residents aware that they will be receiving absentee ballot applications in the mail for the presidential primary from the Secretary of State, so please do not throw it away. I know in our Fabian household, we've already received them. I believe they came last Friday. The Secretary of State will also be mailing an additional application by September 14th presidential election. Applications need to be returned to the town clerk's office by mail, email, or dropped off in the payment box in front of Town Hall. So, please be on the lookout for those. Next, the town clerk would like to note, residents, that if you have not paid 2020 dog licenses yet, you will be receiving a pass to notice in the mail. The licenses were originally due by April 30th, but were extended to June 30th with no latency. So, there was an extension to those, but they were due by June 30th. The Treasurer Tax Collector would like to remind residents that first quarter real estate taxes are due by August 3rd. So, those were mailed not too long ago, so those are due by August 3rd. And I do believe you can pay your tax bill online. Of course, you can drop those in the tax payment box too that's in front of Town Hall. Let's see, the only other announcement I have and sort of update is, I'm not sure how many folks may have seen it, but Governor Baker, Lieutenant Governor Polito, and the Secretary of the Environment, Secretary Therides, were here with a bunch of other dignitaries around Assawamset, Lake Assawamset, Big Pond. I think that's what Nancy Yates calls it. It was to kick off what they're calling the, one of the very first programs that the Governor and the Secretary have put into place to actually help us with potential flooding problems while we maintain, you know, those areas for water supplies for Taunton and New Bedford. It was a great day. It was aired live. It actually, for me, felt a little surreal getting, receiving the Governor's COVID update because, you know, we've been watching him for months now, and he was just sort of standing in front of us doing it. So, it really was quite surreal for some of us. Our local resident, Nancy Yates, who is on the Assawamset, she's the manager of the Assawamset Pond Complex, she spoke, and she spoke very well, and she actually gave the Governor and all the dignitaries. They all walked down to the beach together, and she told them all kinds of great things about that natural resource that we have available to us, but that we also need to protect. So, what part of this MVP process, municipal vulnerability preparedness, because we are part of that and because all this study work has been done now, we should be able to have a much speedier permitting process with, you know, the organizations like DEP. So, in the past, different towns have tried to do different things, but it's been really difficult to get through the permitting process and to get the money. So, what's going to happen now that all this study work has been done is it'll open us up to be able to get funding, grant money, but also get through the permitting process quicker to do things like evaluate the dam where the boards go in. I know that was on social media over the weekend that the water is getting low, and, you know, people were questioning whether the boards have been put in, and I was there one day with all the water folks, and yeah, some of the boards have been put in. So, hopefully now we'll be able to, you know, address all the problems, not just the boards and the dam, but, you know, the weeds, and Nancy even put in a good word for needing help too on Long Pond. So, we really are working at trying to make this, you know, trying to get some solutions here. Everything, the Governor actually spoke really well about culverts, you know. So, if, I'm sure we can, I believe LakeCam was there, and I think they've been airing it, so we can always refer to LakeCam to give us, let us know where we can, I think it's right on LakeCam. I can't see my chat, so.
It is, and it's also on Facebook, on our Facebook page.
Thank you. But anyways, it was a great day, but, you know, like anything, there's a lot of work that goes into these things, and I just have a few thank yous that I'd like to make. One of the people working with us from the state, her name is Michelle Craddock. She is a hydrologist, and she actually was our liaison to the state in this whole thing, but not just that, but she, you know, she worked pretty hard to get this whole thing together, and that's, you know, who we got a lot of our direction from. So, that was, you know, a nice relationship to have. Lots of thanks go to Nancy Yates for all her work. I thought she spoke very, very well. I was so happy, you know, to see her years of effort finally come, you know, come full circle, and hopefully we'll be able to start getting some of this work done. Bill Napolitano, who a lot of folks know, he's from Serped. He's represented our region really well, and we can, you know, hopefully continue to work with them as these projects start to move forward. I'd like to thank the Parks Department for lending us all their tables and chairs and everything else that we needed. A big thank you to LakeCam for being there all day and for helping us set up chairs, break down chairs, and anyone who could lend a hand could that day. So, it was great. And last, but certainly not least, many thanks to Justin Bradley and Teddy Delaraco, who, you know, also helped us with the setup, and we all need a Teddy who can get us the things that we need last minute. So, it was a great day, lot of work. If anyone has any questions, feel free to email me, call me. I'll tell you everything that I know about what's going on there, but that's all I have. I think that's enough for me if anyone else has anything.
Okay, we're going to move line item 10 on the agenda to review and vote to approve the budget transfers for fiscal '20. So, George, can you call the Finance Committee to order, please?
Yep, July 20th around 6:50, calling the Finance Committee meeting to order to a roll call. Jennifer Cipiora? Might be muted, I know she's on.
Yeah, she's muted.
Here. Sorry.
Darren Beals?
Here.
And Adam Lynch?
Here.
All right, all present, thank you.
Okay, so, we have two transfers that need to be done. The first transfer, the Finance Committee actually did it theirs last Monday night. If I'm not mistaken, it was Monday night, wasn't it, George? George, no. Uh-oh.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
Okay. So, the Board of Selectmen have to vote on the first group of transfers that the Finance Committee has already approved, and then we have one more transfer that both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have to vote on. So, Brian, if you could give those motions to us for the first one, for the Board of Selectmen?
Sure. So, the first one will be just the Board of Selectmen. So, I'll make a motion to approve this group of five transfers in the following. Number one, $10,240 from technology maintenance agreements going to part-time gas inspector, part-time plumbing inspector, and part-time electrical inspector. The second would be $7,500 from employee benefits group health insurance to property and liability insurance. The third would be in the amount of $20,000 coming from police salaries lieutenant to fire overtime. The next would be $1,375 coming from, again, technology maintenance agreements. This one going to information technology salary and facilities overtime. And the last of this group would be $3,400 coming from employee benefits group health insurance to historic library electricity. And that is all of them for this.
Second on that motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, so, the second transfer that needs to be done, needs to be voted by the, there's another animal. Needs to be voted by the Board of Selectmen and also the Finance Committee. So, Brian, could you make that motion, please?
Sure. So, these two transfers amount in a total of $13,300, first being $10,750 from the landfill laborers wages going to landfill solid waste services, the second being $2,550 going from the landfill employee group benefits also to landfill solid waste services.
I'll make a second on that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay, George?
Yep. I'd like to make the same motion, transfer for landfill labor wages for $10,750 and landfill from employee group benefits for $2,550 for a total of $13,300 to landfill solid waste services for, again, $13,300. I'll start, Jennifer.
And I'll second the motion, Jennifer Cipiora.
Thank you. Darren?
Beals, aye.
And Adam? Adam Lynch?
Adam Lynch, aye.
Thank you. And George Flahausen, aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
George, this is the last transfer for fiscal '20, so we're all set, we're done. So, thanks for everybody's help and cooperation in getting these things done. So, everything turned out really well for fiscal '20. We appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you guys start, I'll just call our meeting, close it up?
Yes, you're all set, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close out our meeting.
I'll second the motion, Jen Cipiora.
Darren?
Darren Beals, aye.
Adam Lynch?
Adam Lynch, aye.
George Flahausen, aye. Thank you so much, guys. Have a great night.
Bye. Thank you.
George, appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Rich?
Yes.
This is Leah. I have a correction. I'm sorry, it was Justin Pike. I can't believe I did that on the thank yous, Teddy and Justin. Justin Pike.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Justin.
That happens.
I know.
Okay, we have a whole list of probably 100 appointments to make, and we have our time moderator on here, Katie Goodfall, and she is the one that appoints the members at large for the capital expenditure committee. So, she had sent us a letter stating that one of the existing members wants to serve again, but I guess the other one does not. Katie?
That's correct. Darlene Donnelly said that she was interested in serving again.
Okay.
But I did have a call out to somebody, but I haven't heard back.
Okay.
So, at this point, pursuant to Section 25 A and B, I would like to propose Darlene Donnelly for an additional year, and then I would like the town to advertise if anybody is interested in this position.
Okay. All right, so, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Darlene Donnelly for one year through July 31st, '21?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
Aye. LaCamera, aye. Okay, thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Katie, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so let's try to go back to the original agenda now. Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about the 43D guidelines for the former Lakeville Hospital, which is the process that we have to go through to approve this project. And basically, the way it's set up is that there's certain members from each of the boards that are appointed to this team, and the goal is for this team to meet with the developer to review the project, the concerns, and so forth, and then bring it back to their individual boards for the normal reviews and hearings and so forth. So, we need to appoint these people to the 43D committee. So, as far as the Board of Selectmen is concerned, I believe that I was asked to serve, so if a member of the board can make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Rich LaCamera to the 43D by law, I mean, to the 43D committee.
I'll second the motion, but I would also say that I do have interest, sir. I know you were concerned whether or not I had the time. If it's something you'd prefer to hand off, I'll make myself available, but if you prefer to do it, I'll entertain that.
I prefer to do it right now, Brian. You certainly can be involved in any part of the process if you want.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Now, we had sent out emails to the planning board for them to appoint their member. Did we get a response back from the planning board?
No, we have not. The only one we received a response from was Conservation, and that would be Robert Bouchard.
Okay, so we didn't get one from the Board of Health either?
Not yet.
Okay, that's too bad. Okay, then we will, we will go through our normal appointment process that we're going to be talking about later, and we'll just leave the planning board and the Board of Health blank at this point until we get a member that's supposed to be appointed to this group. The other thing is that the permits coordinator is supposed to be the town administrator, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint the town administrator as the permits coordinator.
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian.
I'm sorry, I'm used to doing that. LaCamera, aye.
Day, aye.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is to talk about building projects and approvals. I think that what we need to do is abort that, what's happening is that, and I know I talked about one today, that department heads are coming forward with projects to make modifications to buildings, and what happens is they currently go through Nate Darling, but, and they ask them to, you know, evaluate things and come up with costs and so forth, and, you know, I think that it's better if the board reviews those, reviews those requests first before they get to Nate, so Nate's not wasting time on looking at things and evaluating things and coming up with proposals. So, that's my recommendation. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Before we do, sir, is it more that, I mean, is there a value you're thinking? Is it over the $10,000 capital expense procurement laws? I worry that we're taking away a little bit of the department head's individuality away if we're saying we have to review everything before it goes to Nate. Are there particular projects that have raised this concern?
The Board of Selectmen are responsible for all buildings, town hall buildings, and there's been cases recently that things have been, projects that have come forward that should not have gone forward, and that should not have been approved to go forward. And I just think any changes that need to be made to any of the buildings ought to be, well, first of all, the Board of Selectmen ought to be made aware of it, and some of them we weren't made aware of at all. And the one today that was requested, and I'm not going to say who it is, but it was $20,000. And so, you know, this person has asked Nate to put together quotes and look at the job and so forth. It's a waste of Nate's time right now because it needs to be approved by the board in the first place. So, that's my position, so.
And that was a permanent building modification of some kind?
It was.
I'll make that motion, Rich. Make a motion that, I don't know how to word it.
I mean, I would say we need more structure. It's too open for me right now.
Okay, you got a proposal for the structure?
Well, I mean, I think there needs to be some kind of definition. I mean, where do we start and stop at a modification to a building? Is it hanging a clock? Is it putting up a partition? I mean, is there some form of permanence?
Petition is a good example. Not a clock, a petition.
Well, I just want to make sure we understand what we mean by, you know, permanent changes. Again, I think, you know, maybe this is an area where we might be bothering Nate, but we also know Nate is really strung out with a lot of projects. Is there a better focus on getting him some help than going down this avenue? Just throwing ideas out.
I just think the one that, the example that I just gave you today, this is today, the example, should have come in front of the Board of Selectmen first for modification to an existing building for $20,000 instead of asking Nate to evaluate it and come up with cost estimates. That's a waste of Nate's time.
Selectmen, LaCamera, I didn't get a copy of anything for $20,000.
Nor did I.
Neither did I. That's the point.
But that's a capital project, so that would have had to come before the board anyways to be.
Well, in this particular case, they were trying to do it under COVID-19 reimbursement.
Yeah, but then there's procurement, everything involved, but.
I understand, but it shouldn't get to that point, Maureen. It should not get to that point till we review it and say, yeah, this makes sense, or it doesn't make sense. Why should we go through that process? Why should we go through procurement? Why should we do all these estimates when we don't say that doesn't make sense? You know, why?
I mean, I do agree with Selectmen, with the chairman, that, you know, I've been surprised by a couple of purchases that I didn't think were going to happen. I also agree with Brian that, you know, that department heads can spend money in their budget, but, you know, being responsible for the money of the town, I would rather have more information than less. And again, going back to Nate Darling, he does have so much on his plate that I really hate to waste his time if it's a project that's not going to go through. So, I don't, I.
Well, we can delay it to the next meeting if you want, Brian, so you come up with some framework as to what you want this to be.
You can take the vote if you'd like. My thought was, you know, if we are concerned there is a project that might be bordering on capital expense where we're going to have to approve it anyways, I would perhaps defer to Nate's expertise to give him the option to say, this sounds like it could be a big one. We might want to go and get a preapproval first instead of just bypassing him altogether for all projects.
I mean, you know, my other thought too is that, you know, we're a small town. We're not a big city where there's, you know, 1,000 just town employees or whatever. Communication should be pretty easy for us, so I'm not quite sure, you know, why department heads can't pass something like that before us, you know, when they just, I go back to communication. But I'd like to have a couple conversations before we put a policy in place, but I definitely think that this is something that needs to be addressed, but I agree that we need a little bit more of a framework.
Can we also invite Nate Darling for this discussion? I mean, we've talked about him a lot for this issue, but he's not here to talk to it.
Um, I mean, you know, I talked to Nate enough that I don't know that, I know what Nate's going to say. Nate helps everybody, so. I know what Nate's going to say. Nate helps everybody. So I think this is a selectman decision.
Okay, we'll delay it till the next meeting on August 3rd and and you can put together your thoughts and suggestions on the framework of what we want to follow.
I appreciate the consideration. If there's anything more on what this $20,000 project was you'd like to share through the town administrator, that'd be great.
I gotta say, I'm really disturbed and quite unhappy that there's a potential $20,000 project going on in town that I don't know anything about. I don't, to me, it doesn't matter where the money is coming from. It, like I said, we're a small town here. There's no reason why we shouldn't know these things. There's not, you know, five layers between the selectmen and the department heads.
So I didn't get any notification. As I said, I have no emails, no phone calls, no nothing saying about anything for a $20,000 project. I can go back and look again to see if I missed an email, but no one has come through me or asked as the person that is responsible for COVID-19, that would absolutely be something someone said would come to me and say, hey, do you think this could be reimbursed under COVID-19? Because as you know, anything significant, I run by Tom O'Brien, who is.
Treasurer in charge of the team's money, right? Right. And as a selectman, we're. Yep, yep, so.
And maybe that's part of what comes out of this is an educational campaign to say, hey, folks, even though it's COVID, you still got to do the right things.
Next thing on our agenda, Brian. We're going to be talking about that too.
Before we move on, Rich, I wasn't sure what this exactly was about. But I just had a question. I know that, can we just get an update as it is, a project, building project on the Old Town Hall, or can we do that under Old Business?
We're going to talk about that under Old Business.
Okay, all right. So then I'm good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right, what do we got here? Okay, the next item, coincidentally, has to do with COVID-19 reimbursements. And I would like to know, you know, what's been submitted, you know, I haven't seen anything that's been submitted for COVID-19 reimbursements that includes anything from equipment supplies to reimbursement for salaries or whatever it happens to be. And I think that it's important that the board gets a report, you know, every couple of weeks so we know what's been submitted and what we're getting reimbursed for. Leah, myself, and Maureen were on a conference call with Plymouth County about two and a half weeks ago. And.
Maureen, were you there on that one?
Yes.
And there seems to be a lot of confusion on the guidelines of what's reimbursed, what isn't reimbursed. And what they were going to do, which they haven't done yet, is they were going to set up a conference call, you know, with the towns and to discuss this because there's a lot of questions on what's reimbursable, what isn't reimbursable, how do you submit the paperwork, what paperwork is, you know, is required and so forth. And so that's one thing that I think that needs to be done as soon as possible because this thing is a constant moving target. And other towns, you know, I can tell you, one town, you know, has submitted 1.1 million dollars and we've only submitted $26,000. Now, does that mean we should be submitting something that we're not, we're supposed to be submitting, that we're not supposed to be submitting? And so I think that, and I know that Maureen has talked to the treasurer, Tom O'Brien, a few times and asked specific questions about specific things. But I think it's time to put this stuff in writing. So we know, you know, what is, what isn't, and what we can get reimbursed for because they have a tendency to say, oh, you can get reimbursed, and then all of a sudden, they don't reimburse you. So I think that that's a concern that I have that needs to be addressed. The other thing having to do with the COVID-19 reimbursement is that the school, the state has allocated $225 per student for COVID-19 expenses, technology having to do with the school system. Now, because we're part of a regional school and Plymouth County has taken over doing the state's part for our county. And the region belongs to two different counties. Then our reimbursement for the school alone is $380,000. And we need to get a handle on what those costs are because they can spend all of that $225. I'm not against it. But, you know, we need to get a better handle on what that means. Is that technology? Is that people? Is that expenses? Is that equipment or whatever? So we need to have that discussion shortly. You know, with the superintendent and the business manager so we understand what needs to be done because this needs to be submitted to Plymouth County, you know, as well. So.
Didn't we approve $100,000 worth of Chromebooks just a few weeks ago?
We did.
We did, but that wasn't a one-to-one. That was their first phase.
Yeah.
There was a second phase for another number that would have gotten one for every student.
Right, because I think the second phase was supposed to be for 400 more. And that's where I had some questions about, you know, who's going to be.
Well, the problem that we have is the state has said, are you going back to school? Okay, are you going halftime back to school? Are you going to do remote learning? And the school needs to prepare for all three scenarios.
Yeah.
So if the state all of a sudden comes out next week and says, oh, you guys aren't going back to school, it's all going to be remote. Then they're not going to have enough of the technology to fulfill those requirements. So we need to make some of these decisions pretty quickly because everybody out there is ordering Chromebooks, you know, all the school systems are ordering Chromebooks.
So, Rich, as you know, because of the Chromebooks, because of the way that we have to do the Plymouth County dispersment, it can only be actually when we have it in hand, when we can disperse them, we can't do it when they create the purchase order. It has to be on receipt. So that takes it longer and that draws it out longer as far as when we can submit it because we can't submit it yet.
Okay, so the question is, they don't have appropriation to do that, right? They don't have appropriation to buy them.
The, the school?
Any of us.
No, the school, I don't know if they have appropriation to buy it. I would assume not.
How would they have appropriation? We just approved their budget and it wasn't in the budget.
Would they be buying it out of E and D then?
I don't know, but these are the questions we have to ask, you know, to find out what's going on. Because the way it should be set up is that it should be set up that this is an anticipation of grant money. So what they do is, what they should do is be setting up a grant account that says, we're going to get reimbursed, you know, for this. And if they don't get reimbursed, then it goes against their E and D account. But these are all questions that need to be answered.
Right.
It's coming quick.
Can I make a motion that we send a letter to Plymouth County right away? Whether that's email, registered mail, to ask them where the next seminar is and.
Leah, they did send out something for the accountants today, just for. So remember, they had said they were going to do that.
So what was that? Guidance on how to submit guidance on what?
Nope, an invitation to a Zoom meeting for all the accountants and assistants.
Okay, all right.
Don't you think the town administrator should have been involved in that discussion?
So they have multiple ones. So they have town administrator ones, which I've been on. And then they're going to have separate ones for the town accountants for specific accounting questions. And that's the way that they structured it.
Okay, so on those meetings that you've been involved in, have they given you guidelines of what's reimbursed and what isn't reimbursed?
They've given me guidelines and they put it on the website under the frequently asked questions on what's reimbursed and what's reimbursed. What's reimbursed and what's not reimbursable. And the guidelines have said the same thing for the last three weeks as far as salaries have gone, as far as if it's in the budget, then it's not reimbursable. It's everything that's over the budget or not in the budget that becomes reimbursable on salaries or specific COVID-related expenses that were no, in no salaries, like the, like if we hired someone specifically for COVID-19 for cleaning, they would be, all of their expenses would be part of the COVID-19.
And what about any capital items?
So each capital item that they approve, they approve slowly. So you have to make the rationalization to them for the capital item that it is COVID-19 related. So even if one person has the same reimbursement, the same item, if you don't have the right rationalization, they won't approve it.
So it sounds pretty arbitrary to me.
Yeah, it's very difficult. And as you know, we submitted on the 12th and we're supposed to get our stuff on the 26th. I did reach out to Tom again. I'm a frequent flyer on his phone. I did reach out to him again and they bounced back our submission because they had questions on why we bought things like aloe vera. And that was to make our own hand sanitizer.
To make our own hand sanitizer.
And they had questions. There was a tax that wasn't included. And then Lori had to say, well, we're tax exempt. That's why it's not included. So it's, they're being very specific in kind of changing it slightly as it goes along. And Todd and Lori have adapted to anything they've asked. But when I talked to Mr. O'Brien today, he said, everything looks fine and we should be getting our reimbursement, our first reimbursement on Friday. So as you know, up until last week, it was only five communities that had received their their COVID-19 reimbursement side of 27.
Okay. I understand the reimbursements for equipment, you know, the the PPE stuff. And I understand, you know, having to do with overtime, having to do with maintenance and stuff like that. But any requests for anything other than that should be put in writing, you know, to them and have them respond to us instead of doing it through a telephone call. Because they forget things. And, you know, they're going to say one thing and say something different.
We can do that.
Yeah, we should do that. We should make sure that we do that.
Yep. But again, I do like to double check just in case because of the fact that, you know, I've seen and talked to other town administrators where one town gets something and the other town isn't getting it because they didn't tie it back to the COVID-19. Now, as we've talked in our previous meetings, towns like Marshfield have got, they went first for the very big ticket items. And that's where their dollars had come for COVID-19. We have a couple big ticket items, but I just don't know how they got paid out for things like an ambulance when the threshold is that it has to come in. I mean, did they have someone with an instant ambulance lined up for them? Because, I mean, these things take time. So.
Marshfield got reimbursed for an ambulance?
That's, that was one of the, is that correct, Leah? Do you remember the email that Todd sent us? Because we had asked.
I think Marshfield got reimbursed for an HVAC system in their library. So I'm assuming, I'm assuming that it was an older building or an older system and they, you know, want better ventilation. I guess that's how I would tie it back. And most of the other stuff was technology. We did hear from, I'm not sure, someone, one of our department heads, that someone did get reimbursed for an ambulance, but I'm still waiting for confirmation on that. But you know, I, our library's not even open. I mean, do we know, can we anticipate anything, you know, for the library?
Yeah, but the standard is that it has to be completed for them to pay it. So how did they get a whole HVAC project done in two weeks?
Well, unless they did it before that. Unless they.
Anyway, so those are some of my concerns. Brian, did you have any comment on this?
I had one quick question, Mr. Chair. That 225 number per student, was that set at the state level, the feds, the county?
State.
State, okay. And do we know, pardon my ignorance, but is Freetown going for their reimbursements from the state or is Bristol County doing a similar dispersment?
From the state.
Yeah, Plymouth County is the only county other than Suffolk, I think.
Correct.
I thought Suffolk was doing their own too, so.
Boston had their own.
So hopefully both towns can get something similar and not see.
Yeah, just for my clarification to Maureen and Mr. Chair, 225 per student is what the state has said, but is that, and then $380,000 for the district, Rich, is a number that you gave out. Is that 380 part of our allocation? Or is that in addition to?
It's part of our allocation.
Part of our allocation.
Okay, so the $100,000 that we've already approved for Chromebooks is going to come from that figure, correct?
No. No, this is additional.
Okay.
That's what the Chromebooks were, we did be prior to this. Now the state's come out and said another $225 per student.
Okay.
I mean, we're probably not going to have a problem because we're not spending tons of money, you know, on reimbursements here. So we got $2 million that we're supposedly been allocated to. And we're not going to even come close to doing that. Now, the only difference would be is that the federal government, the Congress right now is debating a bill having to do with revenue sharing and local aid for the local communities. And what they're talking about doing is taking part of that dollar amount to allow the community, cities and towns to use that to offset revenue losses, which would be good.
Which would be good.
For us.
Right, right.
So it's just too many, there's too many unknowns right now.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you remember, the latest one we got last week or the week before actually only gave us to the Phase 3 number, which was $900,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
For the schools specifically, it does bring up an interesting kind of puzzle, though. Like if we can't submit for reimbursement until we have product in hand, but there's not an allocation in the budget for that Phase 2 of Chromebooks, I mean, how, if the schools have to prepare for that option, how are we going to pull it off?
The way I understand it working, Brian, is that the Department of Revenue will allow them to set aside these funds in a grant fund.
Okay.
Until the reimbursement comes in. Now, if they don't get the reimbursement from the COVID-19, which they're supposed to, then that would go against their own budget. But I don't anticipate that happening. So they don't, they probably don't need to have an appropriation. They're not going to get an appropriation from either town because we've already voted their budget and their budget is in place. So so that shouldn't be a problem. But I did talk to the superintendent about it and he's going to get back to me about it.
Okay, if that's something you want me to keep up to date on as the school department lays on, let me know. I'll dig into it.
Great. Anything else on this?
None for me.
No, no, I just say, let's advertise what we have been able to get reimbursed so folks know we're doing what we need to do.
So it's this, in case someone wants to see, it's every paper. It's, it's every single receipt and all that. And.
We just want to see a summary page of what the reimbursement.
Oh, no.
We don't want to see the detail behind it.
We have it.
The other thing before I forget is that, you know, the fire department has been submitting their equipment costs and their PPPE costs to FEMA. And we only get 75% reimbursement, you know, for that. And we're still waiting to hear from Plymouth County if we're going to get the other 25% that's owed us. Now, we did what we could right up front and started right away. And we have been getting the reimbursements from FEMA, but we're supposed to get 100% reimbursement. So that's another question still.
And we're waiting, we're waiting for that letter to come out from Plymouth County saying, now, the state got the letter already because they jumped the gun, is the way that they were told before it was official, that the 25% reimbursement. But we're just waiting for the letter to say we can get the reimbursement. And Todd and I have been talking to them about that, so.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to just discuss the department head review process. That this actually came up from a couple of us that I think that that as far as the department reviews, I think it's a good idea to have one member of the Board of Selectmen, whoever that is. And it can be different for each department head participate in that review process. So we can get a better. So we can get a better feel for what the department is, is doing, some of the issues that they may be dealing with, improvements that we have to make and some of their goals.
I think that's a good idea. I'd like to sit in on some of those. I've had, read a couple. I've looked at a couple of the review forms that we use. I, I think it's a good time to discuss the whole, you know, process. Maureen, have any of those been completed?
So I wrote all of them out in March and April. Tim is the only one I didn't write out because if you remember, there was some question. So, but the only people I met were in the building because the other people hadn't come in. And then I met Franklin last week to discuss. So all of them are written out, but I met with Nate, Clarinda and Franklin. And the way, the way reviews were done in the past, reviews were signed off by the Board of Selectmen. But it really looked like the goal setting was part of where the goal, the Board of Selectmen had come in. Whereas in every year, doing the goal setting portion, which is the very back page, Leah, if you're looking at it.
Yep.
Yep. So, and there was no Board of Selectmen members sitting in unless it was a disciplinary one. The only time that was in was a disciplinary one. And I, I understand your desire to be, you know, part of the process. But in the review process, I think that would be kind of intimidating to the department heads to be reviewed by two different people. As the town administrator, I think that is my position to do the reviews. And, and I think you as the goal setting body would be doing the goal setting. And that's why I broke it out into two different exercises that I didn't do any of the goal setting and I held that off for a later date. Because that to me seems more in line with what you guys are looking to achieve is the part with the goal.
Well, I disagree. And I'll tell you the reason why I disagree. It's because we don't know if there's problems or issues that need to be addressed. Whether it has to do with the employee or issues that they're concerned about their position or whatever. So I, I think this is a good thing. We have a new member here of the board that's trying to meet and understand, you know, what some of these job responsibilities are. And so this is a brand new board in less than a year. We're all new members of the board. And I think it's, I think it's important that we do that. And I also think that because the reviews may be done with two or three of the employees, then we should still sit down with those employees and go through those reviews. That's my opinion.
I respectfully disagree.
I, I look at it as though things have always been done one way. And with everything new, I don't see the harm in, you know, having a selectman involved. And when this is all said and done, if at the end everyone says, oh, okay, that was a, that was a pretty good process. You know, then we've learned something from that. If the, you know, each of the selectmen come away and say, yeah, there wasn't really much that we would have done differently, then we learned something from that too. I also, I, like I said, I've been looking at some of the forms and, you know, it may be time to rethink some of the forms.
You are absolutely right on that. And Clarinda and I said the same exact thing through going through the exercise this year. These forms need a facelift.
Yeah, yep. But I also do know that, you know, I feel like even with, you know, I'm not going to call it disciplinary, but occasionally when something comes up, I don't, you know, there isn't much follow through when something does come up. So.
In what way?
I don't want to start getting into that. Because that really borders on like human, human relations stuff. And I don't want to, you know, talk about anything because it could, you know, be some idea of whatever. But I, I, I'd like to sit in on a couple of the department head reviews. I think that we have familiarity with the department heads. Again, we're not, we're not some big town that has, you know, so many people working here. We, we're pretty familiar. I think my, my phone rings, department heads call me. I don't think that they'd be intimidated at all. I, I think that they may look at it in an opposite way that, you know, be kind of nice to have another person there. So.
Yeah, see, I, I, obviously I disagree, but I also wouldn't, unless there was a problem that my department had needed me, I wouldn't be sitting in my department heads review of their people.
Plus, you know, I, I do go back to some of the, the contracts, you know, you know, some of these department heads, they answer to the Board of Selectmen. They work for the Board of Selectmen. Not necessarily the town administrator. And I know, Maureen, that you feel, you know, that in one way or another, that you're in charge of, you know, everything. But, you know, a couple of department heads have said to me that I answer to the Board of Director, to the Board of Selectmen.
Or it goes through the town administrator per the Town Administrator Act of 1989.
Okay, but their contract still says that they, you know, answer to the Board of Selectmen. So it doesn't say per the 1989 town administrator. And right now, I mean, I'm not quite sure why you're, you know, pushing so hard on this. This shouldn't be an issue about control. This should just be an issue about you don't have any experience in doing reviews of municipal employees. So I don't see why it would be so bad for you to have some guidance in one way or another.
Can I throw my wooden nickel in? I mean, I could probably talk myself in a circle in this specific ask of us sitting in on reviews. I think there's good intentions here. I think we're also perhaps overlooking that it's not just the three of us that are new. And Leah, you're the only one that has any time out of the four of us, if we include Maureen here, by a month or two. Maureen's still relatively new and hitting the ground and trying to figure out where to make things better for the town. Clarinda and her role is still relatively new. Personally, I don't know that it's time. Maybe, maybe in another year, reevaluate. I do have a concern that if I were to walk into my yearly review and my boss is there and my skip level manager is there, then I'm probably going to immediately take a defensive posture because I'm going to think something's wrong. I'm an open book. I know the two of you are as well, that if department heads have concerns that they don't feel comfortable talking to Maureen with, that they, you're welcome to come, talk to me, talk to any of us and we'll find the appropriate way to, to have that discussion. I'm, I'm a little curious if I were to sit on an interview review, sorry, not interview, and have questions or suggestions. I mean, I don't, I don't want to individually act as the board, right? No, one of us is supposed to do that. So how, how do we do that in an appropriate manner is kind of what I'm a bit concerned with.
Well, it would be the same as in a disciplinary action though too. So it's not like it's an unheard of situation.
I mean, I asked for a couple of the reviews to kind of get an idea of what we collect so far. I agree with you, the form looks a little old, but it, but it's collecting a good amount of information. Actually collects more than I give in my own reviews, my data job. There's, there's some areas that might say, hey, this might be worth considering adding. See what Clarinda thinks about it. I think she'd be a great person out here for this discussion and see what she thinks as well. But I'm, I'm concerned that we would not get perhaps as open a review if we were sitting there. But that really does concern me. And if, and if they've got problems that are bad enough, I, I really hope they know that they can come to any three of us and we'll hear them. Cause I know all of us have said that before. We want to hear every employee's concerns and praises, whatever those might be.
Well, I, I mean, and, and, you know, no, no disrespect at all to Maureen, to you, Maureen. But, you know, I, I do think that this issue of control and who's the boss needs to sort of go away. No one needs to be told who their boss is. And I have had a couple of department heads, you know, call me up and say, you know, I, I, I don't really like to be told, you know, that I have four bosses. So. So when I thought about doing this, I thought about doing this as a sort of coming together. Let's turn the page on the old and let's try to do this on the new. But what I'm finding is that, you know, Maureen isn't willing to, you know, she does, she disagrees that, you know, we have a place here when we most certainly do have a place in goal setting. And honestly, you know, again, we're a small town here. We, I have every department head's phone number in my phone and I, you know, I talk to people pretty frequently. I get a pretty good idea of how they're doing their job too. So, you know, I don't know, Rich, again, this is another, you know, tough discussion. Maybe we table this and.
Well, I guess we can if you want to the next meeting. But, you know, Brian, you just said you got a couple of reviews to look at.
Yeah, I asked for them.
Okay.
Today. So it wasn't like I got them a week ago.
So if you're giving the reviews to other members of the board, what about the rest of the members of the board?
It was just before the meeting and it was just asked for right before the meeting.
Well, I'm just telling you that, you know, that, that, so if you're willing to give out the reviews to other members of the board, then why can't the, all the members of the board participate in these reviews? What's the problem then?
I think it would be the influence of the member in the meeting.
Well, you know, we got, we got to look at it from a different perspective, I think. First of all, we have a new fire chief. We have a new police chief. We have a new couple of years highway, you know, superintendent. We have a new HR person. You know, we have a new town administrator. And all those people, you know, we have a new board, you know, and I think that, you know, participation from the board is, is going to be constructive and to discuss some of the issues that they may have with their departments that we need to improve on. You know, as well as a board, all the town administrator needs to improve on as well. So I feel strongly about it, but if you want to delay it, that's okay with me. Well.
I'd like to, I think, I don't know.
I, I mean, if I may, I don't know if it's a matter of delay until everybody agrees. I mean, goal setting, I don't know if it has to be at a department head review. Goal setting can be department. I think that's something we absolutely should have a purpose, a place in. Absolutely agree with that. But I don't know that if it's the individual review of the head where that needs to take place.
Well, the department head implements those goals and objectives, Brian.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
But I, but if, if department head performance review is of an individual nature, which of course is some element of how their department did, I still don't think that the goal setting should be the one reason that we want to inject ourselves into the process. And we, we may just disagree. That's fine. We.
No, and, and you're right. We don't all have to agree, but I'm looking at, at a lot of things as a, a, an opportunity right now to look at the way things have always been done. And to take a look at where or if we need to make some changes. So this is the one area that I'd really like to, to look at this. So you're right. Maybe we, maybe I should give Clarinda a call and find out, you know, or ask her to write up a summary of how some of these things get done. But you know, and then we also have to discuss doing, because Maureen, you've been here a year now, correct? I forget what your contract says about
Yeah, I was supposed to get that, but I never got my goals. If you remember, I talked about that in the fall and then I gave you another letter. So. Comes in July and then the review comes the following June. So, yeah, I'd love to sit with you guys and get your goal setting for the coming year.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you had sent them out. And then did we have a, a board? I don't know if we had a board change again.
Every couple of months.
Yeah.
The, the review is just not about goals. The review is also about performance. So let's get that straight. So we're not going to wait another year to do that.
I guess, I guess I'd also, you know, as part of sitting with the department head, what I would like, you know, to get out of the department head is, you know, changes that they would like to see and perhaps that string a little bit from, you know, the department head review process, but it would give me information. And like I said, so we do this for a year or two and then decide we don't need to do it anymore. I mean, I don't know what the harm is in trying to do something a little bit different. But I make a motion, we table this to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Day aye.
Okay, moving right along, discuss this chapter 61A, 61B policies and procedures. We had a meeting back in January, you know, with the, the Board of Assessors. One, one member of the Board of Assessors, the treasurer, the town accountant, town administrator, one, one of the people that does the work for the Board of Assessors. And out of that meeting came some things that were supposed to be accomplished and written up by now. And that hasn't been done. And we've had a lot of problems with the processing of 61A and 61B. So I, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Leah Fabian to head up this project and get this project done by September.
What is the, the extent of the project, sir?
The extent of the project is to review all processes, all procedures. Because we're not following some of the procedures. And, you know, what it takes to, an application to put your property in 61A and 61B is supposed to fill out an application, it's supposed to be reviewed, it's supposed to be approved. You know, when you take it out of 61A, you know, how that all works, there's liens on your property. And when it's sold and that whole procedure, we've already experienced, you know, over the last few months, two or three examples of this that we haven't handled it properly.
Yeah, given recent information, I would agree. And I would like to see as part of that, not just a review of our procedures, but a review of the folks that have been, or the department that should be executing those procedures as they are today. As part of that report. So I'll second that motion with the amendment.
I'm venturing a guess. Rich is nominating me for this because I did sit on the Board of Assessors for four years. Is that right?
I am.
Do you not have interest, Leah? We should ask you.
Actually, I really love the assessing stuff. So I'll, 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 I'll take this on.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
What was that, Brian?
I was just saying we had a first and a second. That's all.
All right. All those in favor, Fabian aye.
Day aye.
Black camera, aye. Okay, number eight is review and discuss the letters of interest for the vacancy on the planning board. We have received four letters of interest to serve out the term of, of one of the members who passed away until next April. And so I talked to the chairman of the planning board and about the process. And what he would like to do is, excuse me, he would like these four people to submit resumes about their, the letters are pretty, you know, just saying they show interest and so forth. They don't tell a lot about some of the experience. So he would like us to request the, the four applicants to put resumes together. And once we get that resumes, then we can decide on the next step. And it has to be a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board.
Selectmen, the camera, Chairman, camera, I had a question. I think it was Nora Klein, one of the last meetings, asked if in substitute of a resume, we could have some type of questionnaire. I just, I don't know that if we, we talked about that at all.
No, I think we're not going to pick and choose here. We're looking for people that have qualified, you know, experience here to, to fill this position. I don't think it's a case of sending out a questionnaire. It's, you know, what have you done? What makes you qualified? What makes you qualified, you know, to, uh, to serve on the planning board?
I agree with him.
Pardon me?
I said, I, I agree with that, I think, uh, right now, we need, um.
I mean, you have the letters, I mean, you can see the letters are pretty.
Yeah.
Skinny.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, have you or the planning board given any thoughts to an associate member? Um, the town of Middleboro has an associate member, um, with the thought that, um, he would be on board to learn about the planning board, keep on top of the projects, the multi-year projects that are coming in. And that way, if there is a vacancy, um, the chairman, you know, if, or even if there needed to be a, a super quorum, um, the chairman could tap him into vote if one of the members was not available. So, um.
We haven't discussed that and I don't think we're interested in doing that right now. We got a bunch of associate members on the Board of Appeals and, uh, that's an issue we're gonna be addressing later in the meeting here.
Yeah, I think we had talked about that at one point, that, um, we need to go over some of the charges of some of the committees and the reason why they have so many associate members and, um, so what, what are we, what are we doing? We're gonna give these to the planning board for review and then hold a joint meeting?
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna get a copy of the resumes.
Yeah.
They will be given to our board and they will give them to the planning board chairman. And then they can decide what they want the next step to be and then we have to have a joint meeting between the two.
Okay.
Uh, you okay with that, Brian, or?
Yeah, that's fine, so it sounds like they'll, they'll decide, we won't know if they're gonna bring forward one or two options for us.
No, it's, it's all of us, all of us decide.
We'll talk about it.
Gotcha, okay.
We have to talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we can, um, if we can contact these people, ask them to maybe submit their resumes by our next meeting would be good?
Weeks, yep.
Okay. Okay, the next is, uh, number nine is discuss accepting a ten thousand donation from Lake Cam for renovations to the, the townhouse, former town hall, old town hall. Um, Lake Cam has, um, graciously decided to, um, the Board of Directors have decided to donate ten thousand dollars so we can make improvements, um, to the, um, the old town hall. Um, and, uh, one of those improvements that we're, we're talking about is, is to, um, uh, update the, uh, heating and air conditioning system, uh, for that building. Um, we have to have, um, early voting, uh, the last week in August and two weeks before the presidential election. And, um, we really don't have a place to really do it because the buildings are closed, the police station, uh, meeting room is, is not available because this has to be available and these build, these rooms have to be locked up and they have to be secure and they can't be, they can't be used, you know, for anything else. And this is a seven day a week thing. So this is a good alternative that we came up with. And, uh, Lake Cam had heard about our approach and they decided that they wouldn't, willing to help us. So I will entertain a motion to accept the ten thousand donation for the old town hall renovations from, uh, Lake Cam.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Um, no, I think I'm good on that.
I would just like to say thank you very much to Lake Cam and their Board of Directors. It's a, it's a very generous amount and they support us day in and day out, not just the Board of Selectmen, but the entire town and its events and all the boards and committees. So, um, that's really remarkable, so thank you for everything you guys do and thank you for helping give back as well.
Likewise. Uh, all those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
La camera.
Thank you to Lake Cam.
Okay, number, um, um, and we did the budget transfers, number eleven is to discuss the staffing requirements for the, uh, Board of Selectmen's Office. Um, this has, uh, come up to a, a few times over the last few months. And, um, so we have to talk about an approach as to how we wanna, uh, review this and discuss this. Um, my opinion is, is that, um, we need to get the, uh, just job descriptions of the town administrator, the executive secretary, um, the, uh, the part-time clerk, you know, that's in there, the prior, uh, town coordinators, um, job description. And there was some, um, job descriptions that were put together, a couple of them over the last few months and to get those as well. So the, uh, the board will have all the information, all members of the board will have all the exact information than all the other board members have. And then what we'll do is we'll discuss all these areas and all these job responsibilities at our next meeting.
Um.
You there, Brian? Uh, I think we met a loss, Brian.
Uh, let me text him and see if he has problems.
Brian was having, his battery is running out and he had to re-plug it in and he wants that he might go off. We'll try to get him back in here as soon as possible. There goes.
Um, Maureen, I can probably ask you this, even if Brian's not here. You had sent me, um, a couple of things that, um, the administrative assistant, the town coordinator had done saying what, we know what their job description says, but you know, what they actually do. Am I the only one that got that? Did everyone get that? If I'm the only one that got it, can you make sure everyone else gets it too, please?
I printed out, put it in boxes back in April, along with the job description.
Okay.
But I will happily send it all out again.
Okay, um, and then I think, uh, maybe Tracy can speak to the one that she did. I know she's picked up doing some, uh, actually most of the stuff for the animal shelter. Um.
So can you provide the both the Tracy list and the, uh, the town coordinators list? So, um, Brian has everything as well.
I don't have Tracy list, so she would have to send that to me.
Okay, Tracy, can you send that to everyone? I know I have it and the one I have is.
And send it to Maureen, please.
Yeah, make sure we all get that one.
Fill it to her probably back in like February, there's a deadline and I sent it before the deadline, but I'll send it out again.
Yeah, could you just send it to everybody, that's fine, if it's easier to send it to me again, that's fine too.
Yeah, I'll just send it out.
Okay, so is, um, is everybody okay with that process?
Yeah, is Brian back?
He is.
Sorry about that, I had a battery malfunction with the laptop, but we're, we're hardwired now.
I don't know how much of that you heard, but, um, Maureen, back before COVID nineteen, had asked, um, town coordinator and executive assistant Tracy to, they have job descriptions, but to actually write down where they spend some of their time and whatever. And I know I got it, I don't know if you received it, so we asked Tracy to make sure that she can get it to all of us. And Tracy, in that email, can you just put anyway that it might have changed? Like I know you picked up some of the responsibilities of the animal shelter and whatever else. Maybe you can just put that as part of the email instead of redoing the whole chart there. Okay, thank you.
That, that's good, Leah, sorry for dropping, Mr. Chair, um, but I appreciate you guys putting this on the agenda. I think we've been amazingly lucky that we've had nobody in the office get sick over the last few months of the pandemic. And in my month or so here, it's been, uh, you know, eye-opening to see how much everybody's doing. And I'm really hoping that, you know, we can work together to figure out a way to prevent people from burning out and losing the folks that we have. So, um, nice thorough review and maybe some cross-training opportunities being identified, I think would go a long ways towards helping all of us.
Yeah, actually, that is one thing that both, um, people did, they did put a column for like shared, what are some of the shared responsibilities, so that's kind of good to see too.
Okay, anything else on that item?
For me?
Oh, good, thank you.
Item number twelve, request from the town clerk for appointment of election workers. Uh, Lillian, can you, can you, Lil, can you make that, uh, motion, please?
Yes, uh, let's see, the town clerk has requested, um, I make a motion that we appoint the following election workers, uh, with their term to expire August fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Those people are Marilyn Hunt, Joseph A. Chamberlain, the second, Susan G. Lynch, Beverly A. Ingraham, Pauline A. Ashley, Joan M. Morton, Jean Du, DuYay, Kristin Mayne, Robert Brady, Joan Newcomb, Gary Mansfield, Deborah Martin, Patrick Fitzgerald, Joanne Corriere Uppam, Stephanie Anna Carrico, Gail Evers, Frances Kenny, the fourth, Judy Roberts, Julie Kettler, Karen Cahane, Joanne Cupy, Evelyn Bumpus, Mary from Zaglia, Donald Bernier, James Guevere Junior, Rita Guevere, Robert Marshall, Mary Sylvia, Jennifer Abaticola, Maria Peroni Martin, Peter Cupy, Judith Gibbs, Barbara Hadso, Cynthia Souza, Margaret Bethune, James Leonard, Robert Buckley, Kathleen Fuller, Karen Regis, Leanne Cataldo, Melissa Fitzgerald, Cindy Barber, Richard Velez, Joanne Semino, Karen Donnelly, Viola Fairweather, Robin Marks, Elizabeth Nash, Bruce Baptiste, Mary Madeiras, and Lynn Ingram.
Can you read that again?
Is that the end of the motion?
That's the end of the motion. Uh, do, does anyone want me to read the addresses? I don't think I have to, but they are on here, um, and the, they'll be reflected in the minutes, right, Tracy?
Um, I don't usually put the addresses in, um, Lil puts those addresses in to make it easier for me to mail them out.
Oh, okay, all right, so anyway, that's the list.
I'll second that, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
Uh, La camera, aye. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is the, uh, we have a, uh, Council on Aging has, uh, recommended to the board that they appoint, uh, Angela Barossa to be appointed as, as a full member, uh, of the Council on Aging to fill one of the three vacancies on the board.
All right. So I'll, I'll make that motion, I make a motion that, uh, we appoint Angela Barassa as a full member of the Council on Aging. Um.
Leah, may I interrupt for a moment?
Yeah.
There appears to be different expiration dates, do we have to choose which we want?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, no, it's okay, it says, um, one of the three vacancies on the board, so I guess we need to select one, right, Tracy?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so the full member would expire.
In twenty twenty-three.
In twenty twenty-three, okay.
Two-year term.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint Angela Barassa as a full member to the Council on Aging to fill the full member term, which would end July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Did Kelly give any preference to which date? Doesn't matter to me, I just didn't know if she indicated.
No, she didn't indicate.
Okay, I'll second the motion then.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
La camera, aye. Okay, next on the agenda is to, uh, review and vote on annual reappointments. Um, and.
Sir, Sir Meg?
Do you want me to read these, Rich?
Yeah, you have to, unfortunately.
Mr. Chair, I was gonna ask if we could entertain one potential new business item before doing the whole list?
Sure.
Um, I was going to ask if we want to have discussion and perhaps vote on the associate members going through that list. It seems like there's all, some boards have more associates than fulls. Is this an appropriate opportunity to consider this?
Um, it is, but we can't, these are people that have already been appointed, okay, or they're about to be appointed. They served their term until the end of July, which is a week away. So, um, what I thought we would do is that as we go through these different ones, we're gonna talk about some of the charges with some of the committees, cause it's obvious that some of them need to change, number one. Number two is the associate members as well and not reappoint them.
Okay. Dude, okay.
I think if we just broadly say it upfront, I think we'll cause ourselves more confusion.
That's okay, as long as it's being considered, I didn't know if we wanted to have any sort of, and maybe this is a policy issue later, um, maximum number of associates based on size of the group or something, but that, that, that's okay, that's a good approach for right now.
I think that should be considered, I think you're correct.
Okay, sorry for the interruption.
No interruption, no problem. You're a new guy, you can say anything you want, you know?
Whoa, hey, is that recorded, Jose?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Okay, so, um, I think, uh, I wanna make sure we do these by section. Tracy, we'll do the police department first and then the fire department, is that the way you want us to do it?
And you can, you can do it like you make a motion to appoint the following people for a one-year term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one and then just say, Thomas Norcross, police officer and constable, Adam Swift, you can do, you know, groups like that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, um, go ahead.
Um, I make a motion that we appoint the following people as one-year appointments with their terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Thomas Norcross, police officer and constable, Adam Swift, police officer and constable, Robert Schiffer, police officer and constable, Joseph Cowing, police officer and constable, Nicholas Wade, reserve police officer, constable, Anthony Keeney, reserve police officer, constable, Raymond Molesky, reserve police officer, constable, James Bowles, special police officer, Antonio Amaral, special police officer, Patrick Kearney, special police officer, Thomas Robinson, special police officer, John McGinn, special police officer, John Vickery, special police officer, Robert Stefanian, special police officer, Thomas Higginbotham, special police officer, Bathia Dwyer, special police officer, uh, Juana Adesso, special police officer, Michael Smith, special police officer, Rebecca Kahler, special police officer, Rebecca Kahler, matron, Juana Adesso, matron, Kristen J. Campbell, matron, Robin Bellows, matron, Karen Lima, matron, Amanda Korea, matron, Matthew Perkins, keeper of the lockup, Stephen Linus, surveyor of wood, bark, and lumber, fence viewer, and field driver, Emily Ann Mello, police officer, and.
Hold on, that's a one-year term.
Evenness, okay.
All right, you wanna second that motion, Brian?
Good job, Leah, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
All right, I'm gonna, you have the list in front of you, right, Brian?
Uh-oh. Yes.
If you don't, that's fine.
I have it, I have it.
Okay, um, I may give you the, the, uh, fire department, so three, three-year appointment. I make a motion that we appoint the following to a three-year appointment, term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Emily Ann Mello, police officer and constable, Andrew Sederquest, police officer and constable.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
La camera, aye.
All right, you wanna do the police, the fire, or do you want me to do it, Brian?
I'll do it, so you can have a break.
Okay.
See how many, how many people's names are I can butcher? All right, I'll make a motion to appoint the following to one-year appointments, terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. David DeBest, call captain, Dylan Hanson, call firefighter, Nicholas Hubert, call firefighter, Stephen Hutchins, call firefighter, Aiden O'Brien, call firefighter, Nathan Ganyar, call firefighter, Michael McCulloch, call captain, Patrick Dunleavy, call firefighter, Joshua McCarthy, call firefighter, Gage Ramsden, call firefighter, Nolan O'Brien, call firefighter, Reed Anderson, call firefighter, Chase Miranda, junior, call firefighter, Liam Dow, junior, call firefighter, Tyler Christiansen, junior, call firefighter.
Seconded.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye?
Day aye.
Uh, La camera, aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that there are additional call firefighters, however, they were. However, they were appointed for terms to end July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. So these are not the only Call Firefighters we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, uh, the next, uh, section, the Capital Expenditure Committee is me. Uh, I think, Leah, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, when we talk about the appointments to the Economic Development Committee, we wanna talk about that, because they haven't met in three years. And we wanted to talk about that charge. So I would say that we don't appoint, and it's up to you, we don't appoint anybody to the, like, Economic Development Committee until we figure out where we're going.
I agree with that, yep.
Okay, and then the next one's down, the Energy Planning Committee, the Energy Advisory Committee, the Middle Bar Gas and Electric Commission. We need to have a member of the Board of Selectmen, um, serve on those boards. So.
Mr. Chair, I, I would put myself forward for at least the Emergency Planning and Energy Advisory, if, um, the two of my colleagues can see fit. Um, I admittedly don't know how much the MG, uh, and E1 does, but it seems to be very related to the EAC.
Yeah, I mean, uh, if you wanna do all three, that's fine. If you don't, I do, I'll do it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'll make a motion that we nominate, uh, I make a motion to nominate Brian to do the Emergency Planning, Energy Advisory Committee, and Middle Bar Gas and Electric Commission. And then, Brian, if it's too much, then we can, we can make a switch. It's not a big deal.
Okay.
You okay with that, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Second it.
Well, me? I can second it.
You gotta second it.
Let's second the motion.
Where's Rachel?
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I, okay. Now, we have to make a motion to appoint me to the Capital Expenditure Committee.
Yep.
The, uh, the Police Station Building Committee.
Yes.
And then the, uh, project, the, uh, forty-three D Project Review Committee.
Yes, so I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Selectmen, the camera, to Capital Expenditures Committee, Police Station Building Committee, which you've already been a member of, and the Project Review Committee for forty-three D.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Is that a different forty-three D? I thought we already discussed.
It's the same.
Okay.
It's part of the annual ones, but.
Okay, others in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I. Okay, um, I know that, um, the Zoning Bylaw Review Advisory Committee, I think that, um.
Yeah, this one here, Rich, I think that we need to look at it before appointing, um, anyone again, because we have the codification that's gonna be going on. We have, uh, a whole lot of zoning stuff that's gonna be going on. I'm not, I, I've, you know, I've talked to several people about this. I've heard we should, we don't really need this committee. I hate to have committees out there and have people assigned to them that don't do anything. So I'd like to take a look at this one again, too, to see if, you know, we feel like we need to keep it or get, get rid of it.
Okay.
Am I mistaken, or was that one formed way back when forty-three D was first adopted? Is that a part of that effort?
I don't know.
That's, that's, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. I've never even read the charge for this. I've never really, I've looked for some information. So I'm not real sure on that one.
Okay.
All right.
Next is, um, the alternate, uh, Building Inspector.
Yeah, I make a motion, I make a motion that we appoint, um, Robert Whalen, Junior, uh, to be the alternate Building Inspector with, uh, expiration date July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
And then there's another one there, Leah?
Yep, Brandon Maroney with the same expiration date, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? I.
I.
Day, I.
Uh, we can do, um, I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the Agricultural Commission. David Thomas, Member, um, expiration July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Cindy Barber, Member, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Crystal Ing, Member, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Oh, Tracy Trilavan, Associate Member, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Paul Hunt, Associate Member, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is that one of the ones you wanted to talk about, Brian?
Um, not this one specifically, but it's the first one we've come across with associate members.
Okay. Um, I do.
So did you second that motion, Brian?
I did not, not yet.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. You wanna have discussion here, or?
Um, yeah, we gotta second it first, don't we? I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Sorry, it's ninety degrees all day.
Uh, discussion?
Uh, I mean, a three-member board with two associates, just personally, sounds like a lot. I mean, I always viewed the associates as somebody who potentially could come up through the ranks if there was an opening. Um, I'm not sure how you, you two feel.
Tracy, there's more than three members, correct?
I believe it's a seven-member board. Um, their terms are three years each. So each year, there'll be a certain amount of people that will come up.
So how many associates are there if this isn't the whole?
Two.
So there's only two on a seven-member?
Two get appointed annually. All associate members only have one-year terms.
Okay, so it's a seven plus two. Gotcha. All right, that's not as bad.
It's not so bad, okay. All right.
All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
Uh, the camera, I. Okay, uh, Assistant, go ahead, Assistant Board of Health Agents.
Do we wanna do As the Wamsit Pond Complex Representative?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, nominate Nancy Gates as the As the Wamsit Pond Complex Representative with her term to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I.
Um, hey, you want me to just keep going here, Rich?
Sure.
Okay. I nominate the following to be Assistant Board of Health Agents, all with the same expiration date, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Robert Pelucci, Derek Maxim, Christopher Spratt, and John Ashley.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Uh, the camera, I.
All righty. Is Board of Appeals one that you wanna talk about, Brian?
Um, so now Tracy's got me looking at the webpage. So, um, Board of Appeals, and she's probably quicker than me. What's the number, Tracy? Can't find it. Appeals.
I think it's five.
Yeah.
Um, actually, are they even on here? Board of Assessors, Health.
Yes, Board of Appeals.
Yeah, it doesn't go under zoning board. I think it's Board of Appeals.
Oh, Zoning Board of Appeals? Oh, funny me for looking over there. One, two, three, four members and four associates?
Five members and, uh, four associates.
Three associates.
My associates.
But, I'm sorry, say that again, Tracy, I got, I got four.
You have four?
Um, well, because, um.
I got, uh, Noble, Gibbanski, Gillis, and Carmichael.
Yes, you're right. Sorry, Rich, I left him off the list.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean.
That person?
Pardon me?
Who was that person?
Carmichael.
Nope.
Noble.
Noble.
Gillis.
Noble.
Gibbanski.
Okay.
I mean, so every member has an air and a spare? Is that what we got here? I mean, what are your thoughts?
I, I agree. I, I don't know why we need four or five-member board.
I mean, I would think a four-member board, one would be satisfactory, unless.
Five-member board, five-member board.
Five, sorry.
Members, yeah, it's five members, um, and it has three associates.
All the other members tucked down at the bottom of the list, I see them now.
Mr. Chair, you should also know, um, and it, it's not on the sheet, it's on the other one about the attendance. A lot of those associate members, um, were also had, um, attendance gaps.
Plus, we did have just, um, Janice Swanson, who just resigned, too, correct?
Right, but that position will not be filled until after July thirty-first. So what we need to do is put out a request to saying that is anybody interested in serving on the Board of Appeals?
Would we consider reappointing the members and then let that empty seat process go through before coming back to associates?
Agreed, yeah.
Is that fair? Gives everybody a chance to apply?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that done. Um, last year, I did not vote in favor, but, or I don't think I voted in favor, but, um, we, and we appointed the people and then we just let the Zoning Board of Appeals figure out who was gonna be the associate members and the members. I'm not so sure that should be, I, I think the Selectmen should have to do that. I don't think the board itself should. This is an extension of the Board of Selectmen. So I think the Selectmen should have the responsibility of appointing who's a member and who's an associate member, not throw it back to the actual committee to do that.
So I guess, based upon the list that we have here, I guess what we need, what we need to do is appoint, uh, Don Foster and, and David, uh, Curtis, uh, as members through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion to appoint Donald and David.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? I.
Day, I.
Camera, I. Okay, the, uh, Cable Advisory Committee?
Okay, um, I make a motion to appoint the following with expiration dates of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Robert Marshall, Member. Frederick Beal, Member. Walter Healy, Junior, Member. And Thomas Strignano, Member.
I'll second the motion.
And it should be noted that there's still an opening, uh, for a full member, if anybody is interested in serving on the, um, the Cable Advisory Committee. The Cable Television Committee, excuse me.
Mr. Chair?
I, I'd just like to say that, um, for anyone watching at home, we have vacancies, so, you know, you don't have to jump into like the busiest board, like a planning board or a zoning board of appeals, or, you know, there's other boards that we definitely need people. And, and it's a great place to see whether you even like the process of, you know, what goes on before committing to, to a, a, a board that has more work. So it's a great opportunity right now if anyone wants to get involved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I was waiting until we had our annual reappointments and then to gather together the list so I could put out a mass, you know, um, news release on what we have for vacancies and how to go about, um, submitting, you know, letters of interest, et cetera.
That's fine.
Yep.
Tracy, I think if I'm interpreting, uh, Chairman, uh, La Camera's ideas that maybe letters of interest with a resume?
Yeah, absolutely.
Rich, is that?
That's fine, I, I just think that, you know, it'd be nice to know some of the qualifications.
Sure, I just.
Some of these, uh.
If we can do it consistently in one way, it helps.
It's help for us, all of us, to make a decision.
Agreed. Okay, so we have to vote on that one, yes?
Yes.
Fabi, did we vote on that?
Did we second that? We second that, Brian?
We did, but I'll second the motion again, just in case.
Okay. All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I.
All right.
The Capital, Capital Expenditure Committee, Leah?
Yep.
Kevin Keller is not going to serve, and you need to put my name down there as the representative from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, um.
Actually, you already did that.
We're all, we don't have to do that. So this is another, I, I, I'm sorry. This is another position that we have available if anybody wants to serve on the Capital Expenditure Committee.
Yep. Um, so I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the Capital Expenditures Committee, uh, with terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Maureen Candido and George Lahopolous.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I.
I could say George's name really Greek if anyone wants me to.
Do it.
Lahopolous.
Nice.
All right, um, Council on Aging. Uh, I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the Council on Aging with their terms to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for Rita Guevere, Member. Patricia Bissett, Member. And, um.
That's it.
That's it.
I was gonna say, didn't thirteen cover Angela?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, second the motion.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabi and I.
Day, I.
The camera, I.
And they will have three vacancies, is that correct, Tracy? With Angela moved on?
Yeah, now they have two vacancies, but they will also have a vacancy for an alternate member. So they'll two, oh, one alternate.
May I ask the difference between alternate and associate?
Um, again, an alternate is a learning position, um, someone that expresses interest but doesn't wanna fully commit to a full member. They go on, they learn what, what the Council on Aging does. And then when there is a vacancy, and I have to say, the COA Board, they always move up their alternates. Um, they have a very active alternate member. So, um, that's, that's what they use it for.
Okay, thank you. It was just the first time I saw alternate instead of associate. I didn't know if they had voting power if a member was absent.
I don't believe they do. I think they just are there as a learning member.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so we're skipping the Economic Development Committee for now, correct?
Yeah, you know, but one of the things and you were on that committee, Leah, right?
I've been on the committee and I've never even met with the committee.
Okay. I'm wondering if we should try to reach out to a couple of these people and find out what went wrong, why it didn't work, you know, just a suggestion.
Yep.
Chair, it was the chair at the time of the last meeting. She might be a great place to start.
Who was that?
Lori Driscoll.
Okay. Alright, I can I can do that. I'm on there anyways, so I can do that and try to, you know.
Yeah, just get an idea because we want to put it together, but it just seems that you know, after three years, nothing's really happened and maybe the charge is wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, alright.
I think we should have a motion, Mr. Chair, to table these appointments until a future date.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table the Economic Development Committee appointments until we can
Reevaluate the charge.
Reevaluate the charges of the committee.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
Okay.
Do you need a break, Leah?
I was gonna say, can you take that one? I gotta go give my dog some food so he doesn't start barking loud.
I'll speak slowly. Alright, I make a motion to appoint the following members to the Emergency Planning Committee with term expirations of July 31, 2021. Michael O'Brien, Matthew Perkins, Franklin Moniz, Maureen Candido, Robert Souza, Nathan Darling, Kelly Howley, William Purcell, Richard Maderos, Jose Invensio, Thomas Parento.
I second that.
Oh, she's back already.
Back, perfect.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
I will make a motion to appoint Michael O'Brien as Emergency Response Coordinator, term to expire July 31, 2021.
We get quicker as we go. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye. Alright.
Can I give you the up to the Inspector of Milk who we don't have?
Oh my God.
We're missing an Inspector of Milk. Another application opportunity, everybody. Alright, so we're in the EAC, correct?
Yep.
Alright, I'll make a motion to appoint the following as members to the Energy Advisory Committee with a term expiring July 31, 2021. James Kenny, Donald Foster, Nathan Darling, Richard Velez, Joseph Chamberlain II. Are there any at the top or next? Nope, that is all.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
The camera aye.
Delegate and alternate delegate. This is different. Tracy?
Yes. This is for the GATRA Advisory Board and James Gueve has served as delegate for several years. He's also a member of the Council on Aging. And Robert Brady is his backup. If he is unable to attend a meeting for whatever reason, then James would go, Robert would go in his stead.
And I'm assuming this is a board made up of different town members?
Correct.
Okay, so this is basically Lakeville's delegation. Gotcha. Alright, let's do it. I'll make a motion to appoint the following members, well, the following people as members of the, no, I don't want to say members. I'll make a motion to appoint the following people to the GATRA Advisory Board. James Gueve, delegate, July 31, 2021, expiration of term. Robert Brady, alternate delegate, July 31, 2021, expiration of term.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
The camera aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael O'Brien to the, as the Hazardous Waste Coordinator with a term expiring July 31, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
The camera aye.
Day aye. I'll make a motion to appoint the following people to the Historical Commission. Nancy LaFevre, member, expiration term July 31, 2023. Joan Gladu Morton, member, expiration term July 31, 2023. And the following two, same term expiration, July 31, 2021. Kathleen Barak, Associate Member, Felicia Carter, Associate Member.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Day aye, the camera aye.
It's okay. Day aye, I missed that one?
That's alright.
Sorry, got run away here.
I hear ya.
Slow the train down. Alright, we good Tracy?
Yes.
Alright. I'll make a motion to appoint as the Inspector of Wires, C. Robert Canessa, July 31, 2021, expiration and Malio Gazza, Assistant under Master of Law, Chapter 166, Section 32A, July 31, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Yep, Fabian aye. Alright.
What am I gonna do about this milk inspector? Hey, mute her.
Mr. Chair, this this position is previously been filled by the Health Agent. When they they got their new Health Agent, the Board of Health has not notified us of a request to appoint as Inspector of Milk, but the past 20 years, it's always been the Health Agent.
So then I will entertain a motion to appoint Ed Cullen, the Health Agent, as the Inspector of Milk.
Term to expire July 31, 2021, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Alright.
Energy drink.
I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the Lakeville Arts Council, terms to expire July 31, 2023. Jacqueline Kennedy, member Diane Wood Faria, member Michelle Darling, member.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
I make a motion to appoint Jonathan Watkins to the Lake King as a member, term to expire July 31, 2021.
Is this their Board of Directors or is this a different membership?
It's their Directors. The Board of Selectmen have the right to appoint one member to the Board annually.
Good, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
Camera aye.
I make a motion that we appoint Michael O'Brien Director and William Purcell Deputy Director to the Lakeville Emergency Management Agency with terms to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
And it's like master plan goes across pages.
Yep, so master plan is staying as it is, right?
We need another member from the Planning Board. We're short on members.
Okay, so I make a motion that we appoint the following people to the Master Plan Implementation Committee with terms to expire July 31, 2021. Jane F. Rogers, the second member Rita Garbit, member Rodney Dixon, member Maureen Candido, member Patrick Marshall, member and Joseph Chamberlain, the second member.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Michael O'Brien as Municipal Coordinator, Right to Know, with term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye. I make a motion that.
Day aye, the camera aye.
Day aye.
We already voted. Fabian aye. Okay. I make a motion that we appoint Matthew Perkins, Municipal Hearings Officer, with term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Can someone remind me what NIMS is again, please?
National Incident Manag- Something like that.
National Incident Management System. It's part of FEMA.
Okay, thank you. I'll give that to you, Brian.
Oh, thanks. I make a motion to appoint Michael O'Brien with a term expiring July 31, 2021 as our NIMS Coordinator.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint James Gueve as delegate, Robert Brady as alternate delegate to the Old Colony Planning Council Area Agency on Aging Advisory Committee with terms to expire July 31, 2021.
I'll second the motion and do have discussion?
Discussion.
No problem with the folks, I was just curious, does Kelly not get an automatic on something like this? Or designation, designate hers?
Kelly is the Town's delegate to the Board of Directors for OCPC.
Okay, so she's on Board of Directors, this is advisory. Okay, thank you for making that clear. That's all I had.
All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Brian, can you do the rest through the Project Review Committee for 43D?
Yeah, let me just find where that is. Okay, and we're starting with open space, correct?
Yep, thank you.
Alright, I will make a motion to appoint the following all as members, all with an expiration of July 31, 2021 to the Open Space Committee. Donna Wayrek, Brian Reynolds, Martha Schroeder, Jesse Medford, Elizabeth Nash, Adam Young.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Looks like there's one member at large available.
Yes, there is.
Alright, moving on. I make a motion to appoint John Calano as the Plumbing and Gas Inspector with an expiration of July 31, 2021. And Dennis Driscoll is the alternate Plumbing and Gas Inspector, expiration July 31, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Alright, police covers two pages. Building Committee, is this one gonna be around much longer? They must be close to cleaning up.
We did the final inspection the couple of weeks ago and we have very little left. But unfortunately, we've got some work on the communications that need to be finished and that won't be done till at least next October. So we need the Building Committee to approve those invoices.
Alrighty.
Brian?
Yes.
You can leave Rich off that list because he's already been appointed.
Okay, does that leave us with an opening on that board or? Okay. Then I will make a motion to appoint the following to the Police Station Building Committee all with an expiration of July 31, 2021. Tim LaChapelle, Thomas Robinson, Nathan Darling, Michael Bois, Aaron Burke, and let me get to my next page. Sean Joyce, Pauline Ashley and Michael Forth.
Rebecca?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Aye.
Okay, want to keep going Leah, are you good?
Yeah, I can do the next one.
Alright.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. We, this is the 43D.
Yep.
So we don't have a member of the Board of Health yet. I don't know if the chief has talked to, he wants to serve on this or the the Deputy Chief. So that's still up in the air. The Police Chief. John Oliveri is no. Nate Darling is yes and Bob Bouchard is yes. So out of that group right now, we only have three members to appoint until the other boards appoint their members.
Do we want to do them partly now and the rest later, or do you want to just hold off until we get everybody?
I'd like to try to do it partly because we really have to get going, you know, on this this pretty soon and I'd like to make sure that we have all the appointments in place by the next meeting. So we can also update the the guidelines and the and the manual and have that ready to go.
You said we got three that are good here, plus yourself, so at least you've got a quorum.
Yeah.
Well, once.
We're not gonna meet until everybody, you know, till we get all the members. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to do that.
Okay, alright, so Nate, Rob Bouchard and was it Will?
Matt Perkins.
Matt Perkins, okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint the following to the Project Review Committee for 43D. All his members all expire in July 31, 2021. Matthew Perkins, Nathan Darling and Robert Bouchard.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Day aye.
Fabian aye, sorry.
Camera aye, that's okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Should I send an email to the rest of them just asking them for their appointments for the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Alright, Public Health Nurse, I make a motion, we appoint Lori Damaris as member. Public Health Nurse with term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
I make a motion, we appoint David Ennis as Sealer of Waits and Measures with expiration to with term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
I make a motion that we appoint Maureen Candido as Smart Growth Reporting Officer, term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
Make a motion that we appoint James Romano and Nathan Darling as Special Assistant Health Agents with term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
The camera aye.
I make a motion that we appoint Franklin Moniz as Stormwater Management Coordinator, term to expire July 31, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Fabian aye.
Day aye.
Day aye, I thought I said it, sorry.
Okay, the camera aye, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Might have been muted.
Town Council. Make a motion that we appoint KP Law as Town Council with a term to expire July 31, 2021. With discussion?
Second the motion with discussion?
Have have we ever talked about rates and compared rates or gotten bids or do we know anything? I know KP Law has been our council for a while, but I don't even know when was the last time that we even looked at anything regarding council?
But we switched fully over to KP Law last year. We had both Burt Mason and KP Law before that, so it was split into two. And then I want to say is it six years, Tracy? We've had KP Law?
Oh, no, no, much longer than that.
But it was a different company, right? It morphed.
It was Copeland and Page.
Yeah. Yeah, and recently, I think one of the founding members members went off on his own. I'm just curious because we've always used KP Law. I don't know, you know, what if if we've ever done a, I can only imagine. You know, prices are similar, costs are similar.
If you would like, we can do a survey from just, I'll ask other town administrators, you know, who they use and what they pay as they're hourly. And then it'll give you some information on what's out there and what other municipalities are using.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious, that's all. I don't know what Brian's conversation is.
I was actually gonna ask very similar questions. And it's only because this is the first time I'm seeing it is do we, does the town hold a contract with KP Law and then this appointment is a formality or what's the normal procedure? I was just surprised to see a company name for an appointment.
No contract.
Yeah, so it used to be there would be one town solicitor or town council. And I'm sure Rich can speak to this because he was here when they they had that structure, I think. And then as the law branched off and municipalities needed specific guidance on specific areas, they went to like bigger companies that had multiple people representing them. So they would get specialized service, as it were. But yeah, I think the transition was a few years ago between Copeland and Page and KP Law. And some of the principles left in the in the company changed, but I would have to say I have a good working relationship with a lot of their, a lot of their representatives and I've had I've had a couple uneven experiences for sure, but overall, my experience has been very good with them thus far.
The process is if you want to consider other law firms, what you have to do is put out a request for proposal. And what they do is they respond. You define the services, you know, that you're looking for and then including in those proposals are the rates.
Okay, I'm just curious if, like I said, I can't imagine, they're a big firm. I can't imagine they're much higher or much lower than anyone else. It's probably right, right there, but I was just curious, that's all.
Is this generally? I apologize for not knowing. Is this how all municipalities do this? Is this a Lakeville specific thing? When I, you know, anytime I think of you know, putting out a request for proposals and such, I wonder like, is it, are we getting the best deal if it's a one-year term, a three-year term, a five-year term?
Well, one of the problems that you, you know, you'd have to, you know, understand is that if you're gonna change firms, there's a learning curve between going from one firm, you know, to the other. So that that's a factor that you have to take into consideration. So if you were gonna change firms, you want to make sure that the firm that you hire is gonna be around for two or three years anyways, because it'll take him that amount of time. Not, it won't take that long to get up to speed, but you know. So anything to do with pending lawsuits and, you know, things like that, so. You know, like Maureen said, a group of them broke off, you know, from Copeland and Page and started their own firm. And this is the people that are left from the original Copeland and Page and I don't remember. I don't know, you know, what years, you know, that was, but so.
I mean, I yeah, for the most part, I'm happy with Town Council. It's just I'm curious about, you know, because we haven't, let's say, you know, put out a proposal in the last few years, I would just be because we haven't, let's say, you know, put out a proposal in the last few years, I would just be curious, you know, to find out what, you know, where we are in the scheme of, I do think the previous council, I thought he was less, but, you, you know, he had been around for a long time, whatever.
Definitely charged 1990s prices, um, as, as compared to others, but then again, when I look at, um, uh, the Cable Committee's bill, um, he's about, Tracy, I'm gonna say about seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour higher, and he does municipalities too. Um, so, I mean, within that range. Sure, Copeland and Page prices itself pretty competitively, but I don't have the evidence to support that, but it's, that's just hearsay on my part.
Yep, no, just asking the question. Um, okay, alright.
Alright, yeah, thanks. It was more educational than anything. Nothing negative will KP Law to say.
Yep, I agree, yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, aye.
The camera, aye.
Alright, uh, Town Forest Committee, I nominate, um, I nominate Nate Darling for Town Forest Committee as a member with term to expire July 31st, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, any discussion?
Um, it says there's a vacancy on this committee. Is that just an at-large person?
Yes.
Okay. I don't mind being on the Town Forest Committee.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
Day, aye. Those submit your name. Um- I want to be careful.
Just so I can tell you, Leah, that committee hasn't met for years, so it's really not a heavy responsibility committee.
Yeah.
Is, is that another opportunity for reviewing the charge? I mean, would that fall under open space or conservation?
Committee is required by jet, mass general law, because we have a town forest, we need to have a committee to administer the town forest.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Town Forest, that's really tough to get to, but that's all I'm gonna say. Um, okay, I nominate Franklin Moniz as Tree Warden. I want to be the Tree Warden, but Franklin is much more qualified. With term to expire July 31st, 2021.
He reaches higher branches easier. Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and I. And then the, uh, the zoning bylaw review, we're going to table for now. So I make a motion that we table the appointments for zoning bylaw review advisory committee.
Gladly second the motion.
All those in favor?
Baby and I.
The camera, aye.
You made it.
Tracy?
Yeah.
This reserve police officer, did we vote to, um?
No, he, I removed him from the list.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Now, I'm having a few technical problems, um, based on my new office location, which is the hallway. So, um, I, um, I, I have to, I wasn't able to type these. I, I'm having problems getting them out of the printer, so I'm, um, I'm gonna work on getting these typed tomorrow and, um, see about getting them printed.
Okay, just let us know. I still have that, I still have to drop off, uh, uh, something that belongs to Maureen, which is an executive session item, and Maureen's like, what does she have? And the traffic light study for Brian, so drop those off when I come in to sign.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, discuss August and September's meetings. Let's be proposed is, uh, Monday, August 3rd, August 17th, August 31st, September 14th, and September 28th.
I, I will mention, and I know my wife is watching the stream, um, you might just be without me on the 28th, depending on timing, but otherwise, we look pretty good.
We'll adjust the meeting calendar if we have to.
Good to see you from the hospital.
For, for information, how long, uh, I, I mean, Zoom works great for me. Um, but, you know, we do have to start meeting in person again someday. What's our project, projection on that?
Well, the projection on that is too early until things change, because if you decide that you're gonna want to do it, then we're only allowed, if we use the Police Station.
Yeah. I, I guess my question is, I know a lot of other things, people are saying November, the state's saying November for some other, I, I mean, do you see us going that far?
Uh, it's too early to tell.
Okay.
Selectman, the camera, um, I, uh, I was speaking to, um, Housing and Development today, um, and they're in the same pickle about people going back to the office, and they, they've been told somewhere between September 1st and January 1st.
Right.
So it's, it's something a lot of people are struggling with right now.
Yep. I, I mean, this, this is fine for me. The schedule looks fine for me. And honestly, Brian, I'll tell you right now, whatever, we, I, I, your life is far busier than mine is. I can work around your new baby schedule and your work schedules, so.
I appreciate the two of you being there to do that for me, so we'll, we'll keep you up to date as things unfold.
Okay.
For now, those look good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to, uh, to approve a temporary American, uh, mobile home. I, um, I don't understand why we have to do this.
We, we don't.
We don't.
We don't. I was not aware that we had changed the bylaw to the Building Commissioner. I thought it was just-
Okay, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to withdraw the request.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, did we get this? Though we just got this a couple of days ago, so I guess let's just make sure it gets to the right place quickly.
Nate's already taken care of it.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate.
Okay, um, old business, uh-
Baby and I.
Oh, day, aye.
Thank you, the camera, excuse me. Okay, uh, as far as the update on the formal hospital, they're still going through the environmental studies. There's no updates, you know, as of this point. Um, we don't have any update on the, uh, Lakeville Hospital. Um, is there any other old business that anybody wants to bring up?
May I go through my list, uh, that I sent you guys this afternoon?
What list?
Projects list.
Didn't get it.
Didn't get it.
But I know you didn't get mail I sent you either, so something's up.
No, I, I didn't. Tracy and I, uh, the, the email was down, well, maybe internet was down for like the whole of Savas Plaza this afternoon, and Tracy and I had issues back and forth.
Yes, email issues.
Yeah, um, I'll just read it out, if that's okay?
Okay, uh, what, what, what are you gonna update us on?
Um, I was gonna do the Selectman's Suite reconfiguration, um, and all of the things that you asked me for in the last meeting.
Okay, um, if you want to.
Uh, I, that's okay, if, if, uh, if you just want to go through, um, I, I can just update the one that's relevant for people outside of the building. So the status of the Town Hall right now is currently the Treasurer Collector, Assessors, Town Clerk, um, BOSS, uh, HR and Accountant are open for appointment, but the Board of Health, um, had to postpone because the glass wasn't put in this weekend. It got delayed, um, and we're waiting on the glass and the vestibule to be installed, so we can provide service to the town. So it's still, um, it's still call-in and online right now, and leaving, uh, things in the vestibule for people without the benefit of having the, the glass slot, for lack of a better word, um, for people to talk through. And then the Selectman's Suite, um, I have a whole chart that's probably just better to read. Um, but I'm gonna email it to you again. Um, I'm not sure why you didn't get it, so.
Okay, one question I have is, what's the status of the Old Town Hall?
Uh, the Old Town Hall, um, Nate has ordered the, you, the two units for the Old Town Hall.
Okay.
Yep, um, he's scheduling with, I keep wanting to say MV Electric, but it's Standish. He's scheduling with Standish, who is a contracted, uh, contracted with the town. So he will update me on the date when it comes closer to the time that they'll be installed, but he assures me that we will get it in the timeframe needed.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, um-
Anything else?
Uh, Maureen, is that for Maureen?
Yeah, uh, the other stuff is, is kinda, it, it's really in charts and graphs. Um, it's IT schedule and everything in IT, and it would take forever to read it out, as opposed to-
Okay, um, Rich, just under old business, just to bring up, um, the Event Management Agreement for Loon Pond Lodge. Um, so we know this contract's coming up. Maureen and I met with the Park Commission, and I have a bunch of notes for each of the Park Commissioner, so if, um, you want to do this as, eh, as part of the Selectman's meeting, the next Selectman's meeting, um, or if it's up to you, whatever you and Brian want to do with us meeting with them, or if you just want to hash through this ourselves before we meet with them, or if we even want to meet with them. So I'm pretty sure we, they covered all their bases, and Maureen and I know how they feel. So it's up to you and Brian what you want to do to discuss this.
Well, we're gonna get a summary of what they, uh, of their requests and your requests and-
He was the only one that submitted his formal notes. Um, I had reached out again to the other board members. Um, I know Scott's on vacation, but we can synthesize what we had, uh, but I was hoping that-
We can work together and just, um, put it out to everyone. And, you know, they did a really good job because they actually went through the contract, it looks like paragraph by paragraph, and, um, you know, they gave us exactly the spots that someone was bothered with. I, it, just for clarification for myself, and also, you know, as we go forward with this, I, I just, it came up from at least two Park Commission members. One agreed after the other two mentioned it, and also I have a concern under the Management Fee section. I just want to be sure we understand this. Uh, management fee to be paid by the town to the manager shall be three thousand per month for the first year of the term, thirty-two hundred per month for the second year of the term, and thirty-four hundred for the third year of the term. That's per month. Any partial months of the term shall be prorated based on a thirty-day month. We actually pay the company that fee every month, correct?
Correct. It's in there, but you tune it-
Okay, and then they, in return, manage everything for us and make money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, just being sure, but-
Or receive my other email, same time with the catering contracts?
I haven't looked at the catering contract one yet, um-
Get it?
I did, I looked at it. Those aren't catering contracts. Those are customer contracts. So when somebody comes for an event, they sign that contract and say, I'm gonna use these, this, this cater, and this is what the conditions are. But that does not, that did not establish the, uh, eighteen or twenty percent, which is still a question up in the air, where the eighteen percent came from, and the management contract says twenty.
So, um, it, maybe something else got in there, because I'm looking at it right now, and it says Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp Caterer Agreement, and it says pay, payment of eighteen percent administration fee.
Okay, if you look there, I'll bring it up myself. Um, if you look, and it says right at the top,
Yep.
having to do with a customer. Dear customer, this is the agreement. So the customer to me is the person that is doing the event, not this. It's not the way I read it, because there's no, there's nothing in here that talks about how we can get out of this contract.
You know, you're right, Rich. It, it starts off talking like it's, you know, if I was hosting an event, that's what the caterer would give me, but then the language almost reverses in the permits area, and says like, the total amount charged to your client's final invoice, which, and if I'm the event host, I'm not the cli, well, I am the client, but it's, it's like it starts one way then flips.
Yeah, and then, uh, these are all, hold your horses, hold your hats, I guess, 2013. There's nothing dated, um, besides the 2013, uh, 2014 year. So, um, that looks like to me the last time that these agreements were signed with these caterers. So the expectation that we'd have, uh, agreement with someone in perpetuity seems far-fetched.
Well, where, where'd you get these?
Nellie.
Okay, those are the only ones she had?
Yes.
For, for, it's going back to thirteen, 2013, this is it.
That's what she had.
Um, as long as, uh, um, Mr. Chair, might I suggest that as long as I'm working on these other ones with Maureen, that I get whatever she has, try to get into a Parks meeting, and we will, I don't-
My suggestion, my suggestion at this point is, call the caterers and ask them the agreements that they have. Because it's obvious, we don't have any agreements around here.
Yeah. Maureen and I will work on, on this, and, uh, we'll put together all the other information from the other night on the Loon Pond Lodge contract. And, uh, then we'll, we'll attack the caterer contracts and see what we can find.
Okay.
Does that work for, for you, for my fellow board member?
Yeah, but like Tracy and I were talking about it this afternoon, but you can't have an expectation that you would sign a contract once, and that would, that would be it, uh, especially with a municipality.
I don't think any contracts were ever signed. That's why I think we'd have to go call a caterer and say, hey, listen, you're charging us eighteen percent, where'd that come from?
Yeah. Okay, lot of work to do.
Yeah, and, and I only see the Park Commission as being the highest thing. I mean, if it's a contract, it doesn't have to come through us.
It does.
Um, minor, I'm just gonna mention this now, so we don't forget minor housekeeping. We might have messed up our votes on the Tree Warden. I'm getting a note. We might have been on mute or something, if we want to redo that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh-
I make a motion, go ahead, you want to do that?
Hold on one second, I'll tell you what it was, hold on, because I have it.
The Tree Ward-
Who's the Tree Warden on Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we appoint Franklin Moniz as Tree Warden with a term to expire July 31st, 2020. I thought it was one.
It is.
Okay, 2021.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Baby and-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We've done too many of these.
It's gonna be LBR anyway, so.
Okay, anybody else got anything on old business?
Day, aye.
Okay, Brian.
No, I don't think, I know, I don't, I don't think we got them that time either.
God. Okay, anything else brought up front of the board?
I got nothing.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second that, please, yes.
Do we want to have any discussion on this? No. All those in favor?
Baby and I, thank you, everyone.
Yes, day, aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. The camera, aye.